It's 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. If you'll join me in the Budget meeting, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for April 23rd, 2019. We'll start with the minutes. And did anybody have any comment on the minutes?
That's right.
I had one, but if anybody else had any?
Nope.
Mine is extremely minor, and that is on the final page of the minutes, under future agenda items. The Maine meeting on May 13th, Budget Workshop, that should be Budget Public Hearing. That's what that is.
Budget what now?
The Budget Public Hearing.
Oh, yeah.
So we want to make sure that we're inviting people to join us for that hearing.
Great. Can I have a motion in regard to the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the one change.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented with the noted change. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We have warrants 42 and 43, and they are in the amount of 42, 42A and B, and 43, $38,736.82. I reviewed the warrants, and so therefore I'll just go ahead and move them, and then we can move into discussion.
Is there a sheet for any of us? Sorry to interrupt.
We don't have copies for people.
They are on the website. I thought we were doing everything electronically, so they're available.
I will go get it there.
They're on the website, yeah.
Okay. So anyhow, the warrant is for $38,736.82, and I will move approval of the warrants in that amount.
Second?
So it's been moved and seconded. So are there any questions? I'll give people a minute to look up things. I will say that, actually, I left my notes at home after reviewing the warrants. Second item down, BNH Photo, is for Reed Field Television and Equipment Replacement, just capital equipment that we normally have. Mr. Ledoux, who is our assessing agent, received his normal stipend. Are we paying that monthly? Is that how we do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We do have some expenses with Derigo Architectural Engineering, which is the beginning of looking at the fire department, fire station. KV Humane Society is $1,032. I believe that is a quarterly payment. I made a note of it. Anyhow, it's a payment that we make to the Humane Society. It allows us to take animals there, and so on and so forth, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, of course, yep.
And then, pretty much, oh, 00069, the regional school unit, $897.30 for maintenance of the -- it's actually fuel and oil. We actually pump diesel in that location.
That's right.
Didn't realize that. Obviously, that's a really good handshake agreement to have with the school district, so we don't have to drive 20 miles to get fuel. And everything else is very customary. I will say that 00094, which was a sign, it says a white sign, but it's actually, I believe, several signs in that order.
Yeah, White Signs is the company that produces it.
Right. White Signs is the company that produces it. Signs are expensive, folks.
They are.
Yeah, keep your kids from pulling them off, so.
For years, I had an argument with my daughter as to how large signs actually really were.
Yeah.
They're big. They're huge.
They're big, yeah.
They're huge, and they're made to last.
So are there any other questions for me?
Nope.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. We've reviewed those warrants, and a couple of us have signed it, so if you would sign that. I know, we just shuffle papers all around up here. We're shuffling less papers tonight. I just thought I would let people know that we have these tablets. This is something, in the long term, that the board has been planning on doing. Tonight's packet is 55 pages, times five members of the Select Board. It's a half a rema paper for one meeting. And actually, this is a little packet.
And the associated printing.
And all the associated printing that goes with it, and time, and so on and so forth. So I'm pretty pleased that we have these available to us now. And they act as a public record of documents that we make, and so forth. So with that saying, that's my Select Board communications. I ate up a couple of minutes there. Who else has something they would like to share?
I'm going to.
I know you.
The Heritage Days is planning, is underway. We had our first meeting. Our next meeting is May 5th. Come out and check it out. Feel good about some of the things, the folks getting involved, and some good organizations, some really neat history that we want to incorporate, and just have a great time. We are looking for volunteers to help us for the day of, and we're looking at different ways that we can compensate them with some sort of schwag for Heritage Days, or perhaps a lobster roll. And we hope to get that from one of our food trucks. So we're doing all kinds of planning, and we appreciate it. We want to have a great Heritage Days this year. And if you're interested in helping us out, go to the website, go to the Facebook page, and message us either way. You can help us out. It'd be great. So thank you.
And is that meeting at 2:00?
That meeting is at 2:00 PM, yes, indeed.
Right here in this room.
Right here, in the upstairs sanctum.
Other members of the board that have something they'd like to share with us?
I am taking on the roadside cleanup project for this year, and we are, I think, going to schedule it for Saturday, April 11th, from 8:30 to 11:00.
April 11th's gone by, so I may.
How about May 11th?
Bless you.
That's a great day. Would have been better if it was the other, but anyway, May 11th, 8:30 to 11:00, we're going to meet here at the town office, and there will be notifications coming out about that. So save the morning if you wish.
We can have a Fireball mini-contest.
Who gets the most?
Yeah, I've already got a few.
I already picked up T-Ridge after the snow melted.
Good for you. That's great.
Now you can go and pick up the new stuff.
Yeah, there's some more residuals.
Anything else from board members? Okay, we'll move on to staff reports.
Oh, there is one.
Yes, please.
The union meeting house is having their international dinner this Saturday at the high school.
Yes.
Okay, great.
5:00? Hmm? 5:00?
Yeah.
Thank you. Eric, staff reports.
All right. All I have today is the Treasurer's Report, which is available online.
Which I just shut.
And I'll just run through it quickly. This is actually one of the more normal months I've seen in a while, so it's actually quite a light one. But check reconciliation was completed. We had one bad check that was issued to the town, which is very unusual. So that was really the only anomaly that I saw.
A real estate tax check?
I don't believe so. It was...
Something smaller.
Yeah, something smaller. I think it was like $42. It wasn't sizable. But every once in a while, we have one of those come through, and it just shows up on the warrants, on the journals. And so other than that, everything else looked fine. We're actually, at the end of March, had almost $3 million in the bank, so does indicate that we're -- we've got probably more cash in reserves than we need. But, because I don't think we've had that level before. So moving on to budget, we're essentially finished up with that process. We have just the one remaining public hearing, and that's really more for the warrant proper. And I did bring a copy of the final warrant that was finished up today. The clerk's been working on it, working with the company that provides the drafts for us through the ballot process. So that's ready for you folks to sign tonight. I'll ask you to do that later on in the meeting, probably with a motion, just because. But that's available. So the meeting is on May 16th, 2019, at 6:30 PM here at the town office. And we'll be talking about the warrant and the budget, very much related. As far as comments for the month of March, revenues and expenditures should be about 75% expended, and we're looking pretty good. I think that we're actually tighter this year than we've been in the last couple. Not in a bad way, but in a good way. I think that we're on target, and a few areas always that we need to keep an eye on, but generally looking very good.
Does that just indicate, Eric, just better budgeting as we've sort of narrowed and sort of...
I like to think so. You know, there's all kinds of reasons for things, but I think that we have been doing better, being more conservative, and tightening things up. So yeah. The -- a couple of anomalies, interest on taxes is down. That's actually a good thing. I think that indicates that we have more on-time payments. It could be that people are just paying less, but I don't think that's the case. It doesn't certainly appear that way, because we do have the ultimate ability to collect on that, and we're just seeing less revenue. So that's great, even with a higher interest rate from past years. So we also have, let's see, transfer station revenues are down a little bit, and that's been a trend, so I want to dig into that a little bit deeper and figure out if there's something going on that we need to look at as far as materials, what's coming in, what's not. I'm hoping stuff is being disposed of properly, but we want to look at that. And then regional organizations appears to be way out of whack, but that's just because county tax was removed from that line last year, so we have something like a 1,500% decrease, and that's the only reason for that. So that is my summary for the month of March. Everything looks, like I said, fairly stable, and I was just really pleased to see it come in, come in even.
Thank you, Eric. Are there questions for Eric, please?
I guess just a question that's not related to that, but how have the roads done with the melting and the rains?
Mixed reviews. We've had some real problems on our gravel roads. This has been one of the worst years I've seen in a long time for gravel. There was a lot of free stall, a lot of ice, as we saw through the winter, and that has impacted the gravel. We had to put in more material than we ever have. We had probably a couple more washouts than we typically do. We didn't have any spring flooding, other than maybe one little incident on Lane Road, where a culvert backed up and the water went across. So that was a nice surprise. But asphalt roads have fared pretty well.
Great.
You know, there's -- sweeping's underway, just as kind of an aside to your aside. But that should be done in the next couple of weeks, weather permitting. But no, the pavement held up very well. The gravel roads, not so much. With pavement, I want to give one update, because we're on the subject of roads. Transfer Station will receive the second layer of asphalt, inch and a half of the finished material, Monday, the 6th of May, weather permitting. So that's going to be wrapped up.
I shudder to think what that road would be now, had we not been proactive.
Yeah, it would have been 10 times worse than last year, and last year was horrible.
Yes, and then we would have been tasked with pulling people out. I'm glad that's not the case.
Yeah. But yeah, so we also have a number of bids coming in for road work this coming Friday, or not, no, next Friday. I think it's next Friday. Any of that, we're continuing on with road work, and that's moving along nicely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any other questions for Eric? Good. We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the Conservation Commission for their minutes of January 8th and February 5th, the age-friendly minutes for January 22nd and February 20th, the Budget Committee minutes for March 12th, the Library Board of Trustees minutes for March 6, and the Cemetery Committee meetings minutes for February 20th. We also have in the packet tonight the RSU of the Regional School Unit, number 38 warrant budget meeting is on -- that meeting is on May 15th, and the warrant is here. Along with this warrant is quite a bit of documentation online at the RSU site, so I really recommend that residents take a look at that beyond just the warrants that sits here, but you'll get an idea of what the expenses and revenues are in regards to the school district. And that meeting on May 15th is at the high school, and that is the annual meeting. They have a duty to post that, and so on and so forth, but we also want to encourage members of the Reed Field public to go to that meeting. Any other comments?
Just, I just want to say for the record that it's, you look at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five different meetings of people getting, you know, volunteering their time to, you know, cemeteries and just helping with the budget, age-friendly, things like that. It's awesome. I'm so glad that we have -- I'm so glad that we have all those people volunteering to help, so thank you.
He's not going to jump.
I know. I was going to say, geez, the budget seems all right. But yes, the -- but it's nice to have all those folks. So thank you to those folks on those committees.
Great. And so we'll move on to public communication. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address us tonight?
I do, because I'm very fortunate.
Yes, you can. You're a member of the public.
Perfect.
I wouldn't want to, but you guys can.
Because I know how much you appreciate it. Ralphino Mountain View Lane, primarily questions for Eric. Based on what you said about where you are in the third quarter this year, do you anticipate by June 30th that you're going to end up with a positive balance on expenditures versus revenues? And if so, any projection as to what that would be, and then planning for what you might do with that undesignedated balance?
Yeah, so we, in the budget process, do do a general summary of what we expect to have carried forward.
Right.
I think that we, I'd have to look back, but I think it was $100,000 to $200,000. It would be the estimate on, you know, on the overall budget. But it varies. Right now, we're looking, some of the areas that are tight are, you know, as expected, the ones that have more staff time, more, actually, more easily budgeted. So the areas like the transfer station is pretty close to target. Administration's very close to target. Areas where we have some elements of reserve savings kind of built into the budget, which we're trying to move out slowly over time, we expect to have surpluses there. A lot of those will roll directly into designated funds. And that's been how we've approached that in the past few years. But again, we're working to try to move some of that out of the operating budgets into the capital budget, so we can then have a better idea of where things actually are and where they should be. So I'm trying to think if there's any particular departments that might have a bigger surplus than others. We might have 5,000 to 10,000 in roads that could carry forward, depending on how spring work goes. We're actually looking to spend a lot of that down on projects. But yeah, no, we do have some projections in the budget, and we always do about this time of year, a review. I've met with the cemetery staff, maintenance staff, and the road committee, and talked about, well, how are we going to wrap up the budget? How are we going to spend the money that we've been allocated to accomplish the projects that we had planned for? And sometimes ones that we haven't. But so yeah, we do try to balance things out by not having too much carry forward. Not that it's a bad thing if we do, but it's certainly better to have a nice, tight budget. So I guess the short answer is, yes, we're looking at it, we're considering it, but I can't tell you exactly what that would be at this point. Still a little bit too soon.
You're going to have a positive balance that kind of reflects what you've had in recent past years, in other words?
Yes, but less. I think that we're going to, we're on track to have less carrying forward, which isn't a bad thing. Last year was a pretty heavy year for carrying forwards.
Well, that means you've asked for just the right amount, and the taxpayers haven't paid too much.
Yeah, I think that this year definitely has been, has been an improvement, put it that way.
The other question, there's a lot of survey flags around the firehouse. I see septic work going on across the street. Is it timely to ask for an update on where that project might be in terms of, in terms of being ready to definitively state what we're going to be asking for, for that capital project come June?
Yeah, absolutely. We're in the process of, as you noted, doing the preliminary survey work. That has been followed up by the architect and engineer with some design work. Lee Mank and I expect to be meeting with the architect sometime this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, depending on when they get their final plans together, or not final. But all of the information they gathered from their survey work, they've been using to put forward proposals. Right now, it looks like they're leaning much more towards full replacement of the roof at the library, given the fact that the sheathing's probably bad, the structural members are mostly bad, or at least old enough that they should be very suspect, and the fact that there aren't really enough, there's not enough support. So they're looking at pulling the whole thing off and doing a trust system, engineered prefab trusses that we can put in. And that should actually be a pretty good solution for us, I think.
And if I recall, that was the contingency plan to begin with, that you wouldn't piecemeal it, that ultimately you planned to replace the entire roof, but hoped that maybe you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, and that hope is fading pretty quickly.
But you're adequately funded to do an entire replacement?
Yeah, I believe so. We'll get a final, not a final, I keep saying that, but...
A preliminary.
Preliminary is the word I'm looking for. Preliminary estimate of costs, about the same time we're getting our design. I think it might be a few weeks out. But we do have that hearing on the 16th, and I've, we've been working to make sure that we have numbers and plans available a week or so ahead of that. So I think we're on track. I was really pleased to see the work that has happened already.
Lots happened.
Very thorough review of the geotechnical aspect of things and the septic. And we can say definitively that there are just four entities connected to that. You know, we went through all the deeds. We had the surveyors do their work, so we're confident about that arrangement. So yeah, that's where we are. The fire station, I'm not sure, last time we spoke or talked, we hadn't gone to Winthrop, but I went down there with the fire chief a couple of weeks ago, and we did a review of that facility, which is a wonderful facility.
That's a Cadillac building.
Well, it is. But, and they're, they had a lot of donations. They have a, like a hose tower, a training tower. The thing's amazing. It's like a gym inside of a fire station, which is not a bad idea when you're trying to recruit young guys to do their stuff, but...
That's a young guy endeavor.
But they were looking at a 200 per square foot cost, which is actually very much what we're looking for. So I think that there's a lot of lessons to be learned from that building. And so, yeah, we're, we'll be, we'll be continuing on, and I'm comfortable that we're on track.
My last question is, the other people that share the septic system, have they bought into the repair costs yet?
Well, we don't know exactly what they are yet. We...
But are they willing to, have they expressed the willingness to be partners in the repair?
They don't have a choice, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you look at it.
And can they afford to do it?
Yeah, we have, we have a deeded, a deeded expectation that they contribute. The town's share will be going up. Part of the reason that we have to do this is that the capacity of the system, the tanks are okay. It's the leach field itself that needs to be revised. Our share is going to go up as far as our volume estimate, and that's going to change the ratios a little bit. And so, but there are deeded provisions that require them. So as far as, we don't know what the cost is, so we can't provide them with a, with an estimate yet.
If they're cash-strapped, can the town arrange some sort of an incremental payback system?
I think absolutely I'd be willing to consider that. I mean, I wouldn't want to force a $5,000 to $10,000 repair on somebody. I mean, the field itself does need to be revamped. It is starting to get to the point of failing. There was standing water in one of the fields. So that indicates that it's on its way out. So it's not as though we're just saying, well, we're making it bigger, so you're going to pay for it. This is not that at all. But absolutely would be willing to work with property owners to find a way to do a payment plan of some kind.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Are there other members of the public that would like to address us? None? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. Maura Moody for the Heritage Days Committee. Is Maura here?
No, she has a, she thought the meeting was yesterday, and so didn't get the change. So she had a work meeting, because she works in Lewiston at a club that sort of stays late, has weird hours. So she knows she's going to be here.
Great.
But otherwise, I'll see her on the 5th.
She can begin volunteering.
Oh, trust me.
Anytime.
She is. She's already sending me some great stuff, so.
Great. We'll consider the appointment of Catherine Mills-Woodson to the Heritage Days Committee. Can I have a motion in regard to that?
I would like to move to accept the nomination, the appointment of Catherine Mills-Woodson to the Heritage Days Committee for this year.
I'll second that. Do we have any questions, or would you like to say anything?
No, I'm good.
Great.
Dennis says it's all right.
We draft them pretty quick, all in favor.
Amen. Thank you very much for doing that.
I'll pass that along.
I appreciate it.
Unfortunately, we have the resignation of Jen Henderson from the Library Board of Trustees. I believe I moved her nomination on to that. She's just got some additional time constraints and so forth that are preventing her from being fully active as she would like to be on the Library Board of Trustees. So I move that we approve her resignation, accept her resignation with regrets.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to, to accept a said resignation with regret. Are there any comments on the motion?
Just thank her for her service.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. She certainly did things in the meantime. I know she was pretty active. So all in favor? And life changes, so you can go on and come back at some point. We'll move on to old business, which is the regional broadband project update and discussion. As at the last meeting, I volunteered to attend a meeting of a broadband group that is looking to see what we can do, at least in a study phase, to, to begin to look at information regarding broadband access, better broadband access for Reed Field, Mount Vernon, Vienna, and Wayne. Excuse me, not Vienna, Fayette and Wayne. And so I invited here tonight Joe Young, who is from the Fayette Select Board, and has sort of helped coordinate this. We had approved $500 for this project, and we sat down the four towns in this working group with a consultant to take a look at a grant application, and what our share of that eventual grant would be in terms of cost. And it's like a $30,000 study, so we would all be at about a $7,500 expense. This was, the timing and terms of getting something onto the warrant, or whatever, is not really the best, most desirable at this point. But this is one of those things where contingency is not just simply for emergencies, but it's for opportunities that we need to, feel we need to explore. I actually talked a little bit further with Joe this afternoon, and he and I had some thoughts about lowering that $7,500 amount. And Joe, would you mind sharing with us a little bit of the background of the project, perhaps? I've only attended one meeting, and Joe, you've been there right from the start, right?
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Yes, I'd be happy to, to speak to that. Our first meeting was in January, and it was representatives from Mount Vernon, Fayette, and Wayne met at that point. And we agreed that we ought to go forward and try to put together an application for funding a broadband planning project. And what we'd get out of a broad bland, broadband planning project is a review of what is already existing in the community... is a review of what is already existing in the communities, and then options for increasing the speeds available to the community via three or four different options. It would be very similar in look to the Franklin County broadband plan, if you've ever looked at that. And it's, it's a very detailed and extensive report for Franklin County, obviously, because they have so many communities, and they did a countywide assessment. So subsequent to the January meeting, Brian LePold from Casco Bay Advisors LLC, he's a small consulting firm that, in fact, Brian used to be the Vice President of Sewell Company in the utilities area. And he is since, they've been bought out by a management group, and they've decided to restructure the work that Sewell Company does. And the broadband planning and utilities work that he was doing was one of the things that they decided they didn't want to do. So he's formed his own company to do that kind of work. And so that's how I know him and how he got involved in this process with us. And so, like I said, subsequent to January, he and I sat down and we put together an application to the Main Community Foundation for funding to help us do a broadband plan. And that was due in March, I think it was. And we completed it. It's in there, and it includes all four of our communities. And subsequent to that, we had another meeting in April where we talked about a draft MOA that I had put together and further discussions on what the broadband planning process would be and that sort of thing. And so I emailed you tonight, Eric, and Bruce, copies of the latest draft, which sets out the $5,000 commitment from each town and gives clearer explanations of how the process would work, depending on how much money we get from grants. I think $5,000 is probably more than we will need, if we're successful at all in getting grants. I would hope it to be closer to, you know, 3,000, maybe even as low as 1,500, depending on how generous the Main Community Foundation is and Connect Me would be towards us. So that's where we stand. I need to get the MOA signed as soon as possible so that we can go forward and sign a contract with Casco Bay LLC to actually do the grant application. Now, I talked with Brian tonight, and the Connect Me Authority is having a meeting on Friday of this week. He is reasonably confident that they're going to finally release the guidelines for the grant applications and the deadlines and that sort of thing. And he's thinking that it'll probably be in mid-June is what the deadline will be. So we will, in the interim, have to hold a joint broadband meeting for the communities. As part of that, I'd like to see us get as many businesses, medical people, educators, involved in the meeting to explain why higher-speed broadband access is needed in these communities and how it will help benefit the businesses, the medical community, the education, and anybody else that needs, needs this. So that means each of us in our own communities reaching out to places like Kents Hill, the camps like Vega and Winnebago. Whatever businesses you might have, we don't have much, but we'll do what we can. And have that meeting for the record and as part of the community checklist that's required in the Connect Me grant application. And so that's where we are and where we need to go as a group. Kind of as a parallel issue, Clyde Dyer from Mount Vernon and myself met with Bob Devlin at the, as the Administrator for County, Kennebec County. And he is willing to put this on the county agenda. And our thought was that if we could somehow morph this into a county application rather than just four towns, it's certainly going to compete better at the Connect Me Authority. So we're pursuing that. I'm not really super optimistic about it, given the time constraints that we have, but you never know. I also met with Aaron today in Wayne, Aaron Krotowski. And he's, he said Wayne's on board, they're all set. Clyde's already said that they're on board in Mount Vernon, so, and my board is definitely on board with getting this done. The only caveat I'll say is that we have to put ours on the June warrant for raising the $5,000. I'm reasonably optimistic that we can make that happen, but you never know. But we'll find some way of making it work. And one last thing is I had communications with the Town of Leeds last week, and I'm on their agenda for tomorrow night to meet with them and see if they might want to come in and share the, share the cost of doing this and increasing the, increasing the scope, but probably decreasing our costs because it doesn't cost that much to add one more town.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions for Joe?
I see in the proposal from Casco Bay, they've listed up to 14 towns, and Leeds is not on that list. So it's okay to go beyond, it doesn't matter which towns. It's just as we bring in more towns, the unit cost goes down.
Right. As long as they're adjacent to us, which they would be Wayne and Leeds are sharing a border, and they're not that far, they're south of us, just a little bit. Town of Linnwall Falls was already done as part of the Franklin County, and it was part of the work that Brian LePold did before, so he has all that information already. So we've got a nice group here. And I understand Vienna is not necessarily out of the, out of the mix on this. There is some interest in the community. And I talked with Denny Keschel in Belgrade, and he says they're, they're very interested in broadband. So I'll reach out to them again at one of their selectmen's meetings and see if we can get more.
So we could bring on additional partners beyond the original four, beyond the date that we signed.
Right. What we would do in that.
Then we would do an amendment or?
Right. Right. Especially if we can get them in before we actually have to put the application in.
Right.
May I ask a question?
Please do.
And I'm, I'm sorry, sometimes I am very dumb. What is the purpose of this agreement? How are we, what is the outcome? That will be more broadband availability to places that don't have it now? Faster speeds that don't have it now, more control? I'm sorry if I seem dumb, I just want to know.
Not at all, not at all. It's, first of all, it's a complicated thing. And second of all, the process of getting to where we might want to go in terms of having faster, more widely dispersed access to internet broadband at speeds that will accommodate, you know, businesses that have a higher, a need for higher speeds is a long project. And so the agreement I'm talking about is a memorandum of agreement between the four towns.
Right, yeah. They, sort of, do they negotiate together for faster access? Or they work together, lobby together?
Well, ultimately, it will depend on what comes out of the planning process. So this, initially, it's, it's simply to do the planning process, which involves Brian LePold and his, his people coming in and inventorying all the wires that are here, consolidated. What is it? Spectrum is the cable company. So those two, and if there are any others that are on your poles, then they would be inventorying those so that they know where they go and what level of service they're providing. And from that, he would create maps and a report that will tell us what it's going, a ballpark estimate of what it's going to cost to increase the services from a, from each one of those services that are existing. So from the cable company.
Like fiber optic sort of option or so?
Well, that's, that's a third option that he did in the, in the Franklin County report. And I would expect him to do the same thing in this one. Is that what if we all got together and decided to do our own fiber network and then offer that to internet providers as a service? Use our, our stuff, and all you have to worry about is providing the internet service. The other options are, of course, increasing the availability and the speed that Consolidated or Spectrum could offer in the community and to push it out to those residents or roads that do not have it now or have very low.
They're kind of leveraging as a group better access to better pro.
That is, that is my thought. If we stayed together as a group after the planning process to try to leverage a better deal from any one of those or as a group doing our own, that would be the right. But, I mean, those are decisions that you're going to have to make down the road after you know what you have and what's available.
Oh, it seems like it's going to take forever.
Oh, yeah, it will. I mean, this, the planning process is going to take us a year. We'll, they're hopeful, or Brian, I'm not sure whether he was hopeful or not. He was saying that they'll probably make the grant awards from Connect Me by the end of June. So it's going to be a very tight turnaround on the application. But even, you know, once June hits, then we, we go into the planning process. And it takes them a while to do the inventorying and put the reports together, the draft reports and the maps and all that stuff together. So we're, we're looking at, you know, probably this time next year before we have something to actually look at. And then we start talking about, okay, what do we do now to leverage federal funds, state funds, plus whatever local money that we might want to come up with? So it's, it's a long process. I hope that helps answer.
No, it definitely did. Thank you, Mr. Young.
So this is the initial study.
Yeah.
So it doesn't provide anything in terms of faster broadband. But it does answer all the questions as to what we have and what the right questions are and how the, what the best options are.
Right.
Perhaps to proceed.
Yeah.
So that's what the study is for. The other thing I would mention is just kind of looking forward. And it's, you know, perhaps we don't have a lot of businesses who use high internet or need, or rely on it now. But that's always probably going to grow, number one. Number two, we have entrepreneurs who live on many streets here who are now telecommuting. Or, I mean, I know people in this town that their home base is New York City.
Right.
And so, you know, they're in New York City once or twice a week, and they're working up here. And, you know, they are, they've decided to be residents here. And so this is a service that can retain, hopefully, their continued participation in the community. The other thing I think we want to look forward to is we developed an age-friendly committee a couple of years ago. It's been a very successful committee. Telemedicine is probably going to become a very large thing in, in a fairly short time, probably within the next decade. Maybe that's not a short time for all of us, but it's. Diagnostic work, test interaction, so people don't have to make trips in and out of Boston all the time. All that stuff is within the realm of possibility. So I'm very personally supportive of the direction going with this. I will say, the timing and, and how we might approach this hasn't worked as well as I would like it to. But that's, that's no one's fault. It's just, we jumped on the ship at a different time. And so we're, we're there now. And if we want to go ahead and do this $5,000 expense, we will need to have a vote in terms of where that money comes from or designated out of contingency. We.
And Bruce, just from my simple ways, like basically when, when people say, yes, I wish there was faster internet in town, well, this is the first step. Truly, truly, it's the very first step.
We would always have to do this kind of study. Now, that's, one of the attractive things about this is, yes, it's, maybe we can all work together and leverage something real together in the long run. But we can also go our own way, because all of deliverables, the maps, what you have, and so on and so forth, won't come as just one mass of, this is for your four or five towns.
Right.
It'll be, you can break it down by town. You can look at it and study it by town. So all of deliverables are mirrored underneath with the actual town breakdowns. So if we decide we're going to try to negotiate with Spectrum in a different way, for example, or whatever, because maybe not us, but a future board thinks that makes sense, then that's baseline information will be there.
I love it. I love it.
I have a question. Either of you can answer it. There's a project schedule for phases. I think you're finished with phase one, or just finishing. But phases two through seven, and it, it shows here in the proposal on item three that that goes through October of this year. So is that when we're expecting to get deliverable from Casco Bay?
I would suggest that that's probably going to be slipped. The, you know, that, that timing is going to be slipped, given the thought process when that proposal was put together was that we would have an earlier application date than we did, so.
Okay.
That'll be late, it'll be, like I said, it'll be, I'm thinking probably this time next year, or maybe, maybe a little bit sooner, but I wouldn't anticipate it before then.
If we don't get the grant, then we'll be at a different decision point.
Great.
We will, we're not on the hook for the $5,000 at that point. We will have to make a decision if we want to go forward and increase it to 7,500 and pursue this on our own, or negotiate something else with Casco in terms of an overall price, or seek further partnerships. There's some, some different directions to go in. When you say as soon as possible, Joe, I know you would love to say, make sure you sign this tonight on the way out. If we do that at our next meeting, I, I want to give people.
Two weeks?
Yes.
Do we mean two weeks?
No.
Or is it next week?
It's not next week.
May 13th, I think.
I'm looking.
About mid-May, I think we placed it. We don't meet every, every.
May 13th.
May 13th is our next meeting.
That's two weeks.
Well, no, it's more like three.
I was thinking three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that also the budget meeting?
No. The budget meeting is the 16th.
So my other question then is, for, I'm very interested in this. I think this is a great idea. Trying to get the internet at least out to all residents who currently don't even have that option. Would be a primary goal, and the secondary goal would be to increase the speed. Because once you have the network up, you can have it developed farther. But that first piece is getting a company to actually put it in.
Right.
Because it's very expensive when you have just a few users down the line. I would like to encourage your group of however many towns it is to try and get something so that we could use it for next year's warrant for our, for any of the towns that are involved. Because I wouldn't want to fund a larger purchase price out of contingency. It would be better if we can, for all of us, to put it on the town warrant. So if there's any point in time that the group has the option to say, well, let's get this done now and not make it take longer, that would be my preference.
So am I understanding you to say that once we complete the planning process, that you would like to see us move forward with a negotiating an actual opportunity to increase, deliver and increase speeds throughout all the communities? Or particularly Reed Field's community?
Well, if we're doing it as a group, to do it at the same time with the group. But, you know, if there's, if you're looking at this time next year for this to be finished, if it's possible to do it two months earlier than this time next year, then we can put something more into the warrants for the town. So just if that's something that comes up while you folks are meeting and developing plans, two months could make a huge difference.
Okay.
As opposed to it then going out another year forward. Is, I guess I'm not saying this very clearly, but.
We have, with the town meeting format that we have, the secret ballot, we basically have to have a budget done by February.
Right.
So it pushes us pretty far back.
Understood. Okay. So then what I'm hearing you say, that you'd like to see the planning process finished. the planning process finished sooner than...
Then later.
This time next year, that you'd like to see it done in January so that you can be planning your budget for the next phase.
Right.
Gotcha.
Whatever that next phase is.
Right.
And I understand there will be multiple phases. It's not that, okay, by next year we're gonna be saying, oh, so let's install. I know that's not going that fast.
Right. It, it won't go that fast, but what it will do is it will give us an indication of how much money we're going to need.
Right.
To complete an expansion project. Not that we would actually come up with all that money because we're talking millions of dollars here. We're, we're not talking about peanuts, obviously. So, uh, what, it would be a, a, a good time to put a placeholder in there as a reserve fund for broadband expansion that you could start, uh, building, uh, a kitty to match whatever grants might be available from the state and federal.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And I agree.
So, I, I just think if we're going to do this, and I hope we do, we ought to keep it rolling as much as possible.
Yes.
So, and I think it would be wonderful to bring more towns in. I realize that might be putting a lot on your shoulders, but you said you have a contact through the county that is reaching out also to the different towns?
Well, for the county.
For the county itself.
For the county to come on board.
Right. The county itself is, uh, Bob Devlin is the administrator for the county and he's agreed to put it on the commissioner's agenda. Uh, I think he will probably make some phone calls to the larger communities like Augusta and Gardner and see where they stand on this. I'm hopeful that they will be sympathetic to what's going on in the rural parts of this, the county because it's, it's, it's in their self-interest when you think about it because the more valuation we have as communities, the less, uh, pressure there is on them to fund the county budget. So, they, they want, they ought to wanna see us succeed on something like this.
Great. So, I think maybe we need a motion to do something?
We do need a motion, uh, in regards to this. Um, so, the reason I was asking about May 13th is the MOA, which is a memorandum of agreement, okay, that's in your packet, has some additional language in it. Um, it was emailed to Eric and I tonight. I have actually not had time to open that email.
I didn't expect that.
I think I saw the bing while I was shoving a chicken wing in my mouth and leaving the door to come down here.
And you didn't stop and read it?
And I didn't stop and read it. I even knew it was from you, Joe.
Have the amounts changed in it?
Yes.
Yeah, I reduced the amount to $5,000 rather than the 7,500 that was previous.
Because the 5,000 is what's in our packet. Each member will provide the Town of Fayette with 500 and then each will provide up to 5,000 as its share.
Okay, so that, it's, it was drafted, redrafted and then redrafted again after you receive that.
You're right. So, the, the pricing, the intermediate one that we had just immediately following the meeting, uh, what was it, last week?
Right.
Yeah. So, that was where we were talking about 7,500.
Right.
And then we talked again since.
Yeah.
And so, 5,000. We're back at 5,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Up to.
Up to.
But I think it states that we need to provide... There was somewhere in there about when we needed to pay that to Fayette, wasn't there?
There is.
When would that be?
Uh, the, the 5,000, the, well, I'll need the, the 500 immediately, but the 5,000, up to 5,000 would be determined when we get grants.
Okay.
So...
Right.
Once, once we've got the award, then we can figure out how much money each town has to kick in to create the...
And if you get more towns, you'll have less.
Exactly.
The award delivery date is...
The, the award for Connect Me is thought to be, thought to be the end of June.
Okay, so we've already approved the $500.
That's right.
Right.
So, we can send that check by whatever time it's due.
Yeah.
We've not paid that yet.
So, it's just that we need to authorize signing the MOA?
So, we're authorizing signing that, but, but by doing that, we're saying we're gonna find the money.
Right.
And maybe finding it in next year's budget or...
That's where it would need to go fall, I think.
Yeah.
Given the timeframe.
Yeah. So, that's a little bit different. So, we may have some of that money come out of, um, a couple of different places then.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, we have, um, expanded our planning, um, budget for this year, but next year we start again. Yeah, so we have some funds we could use that might not be contingency.
So, this might not be all a contingency poll as well, is what I'm saying?
That's fair to say.
Okay.
And it may not be up to 5,000. It may be quite a bit less.
Yeah, depending on how many towns and what you get for grants.
So...
Yep. But I always, like, these things are in front of us with that scale so that we know that is, um, a likely amount to be considered in front of the public.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a memorandum of agreement between the towns of Fayette, Mount Vernon, Reedfield and Wayne, also known as the Western Kennebett Lakes Community Broadband Association, to complete a joint broadband planning process as presented.
I second that.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. Uh, does it need to be reread? Is there any discussion in, in regards to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Joe, for coming by tonight. I know you had your board, select board meeting tonight as well, right?
Yes, I'll go there next.
And so, now you can report what we did.
That's right.
You need to be late? You can stick around.
We have good partners.
Right. You know, it's so much fun. I really would like to stay, but...
We hear that all the time.
I have my duties that I...
Don't we all? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for your time and your work.
Mighty. I'll take a motion to extend the meeting by 10 minutes.
I'd like to move to extend the meeting by 10 minutes.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to, uh, uh, extend the meeting by up to 10 minutes. All in favor? I'll always say up to. Um, next, under, thank you for, uh, bearing with that discussion and I, and I know some of the documentation, it really just kinda broke today in terms of renegotiating the 75 down to the 5,000 and...
I'm all for work.
And getting that new language in.
I just wanna know what it is we're paying for.
What's that?
Oh, I was just, I'm all for work and I just wanna make sure I knew exactly what it was we were paying for.
Well, one of my, one of my concerns at the time was, um, in, in doing the project that I, I thought there should be some, um, shared risk with a consultant.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, he just doesn't get the whole 7,500 if, if, if the grant doesn't proceed.
It's good work if you can get it.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah.
Um, but in any case, uh, we'll move on to new business, which is to consider proposals for the expansion of the Reedfield Fairgrounds gravel lot. Uh, we've seen the flagging down there if you've been walking a dog or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so, obviously, we're, uh, ready to pull the trigger on that. Um, we have the, uh, proposals in here. Um, Eric, would you like to speak to them?
Sure. Um, and I'll, I'll note that in the addendum, uh, on the, um, packet page, um, because we have the, the, the warrant, or another warrant, the, um, the agenda and packet, then we have the treasurer's report and the, um, warrants, the finances, and then we also have on the far right side, uh, an addendum. Uh, in there is a spreadsheet that summarizes the, um, um, the, uh, RFP, uh, information we received.
Where is that exactly?
Uh, on the far right column. Uh, if you are looking at the, um, the location where the, uh, packet is, on the far right, there's a section called addendum. That includes, includes information here for, uh, for this, also some information for...
Is there, is there a way if we add documents, um, on, on a, uh, this is getting off topic a little bit.
Yeah.
On a select board item like that, that we can just note it as amended or updated? So, as much as possible have the full packet?
It's...
Cause I, I'm kind of drawing from three different places tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
I'm drawing from email. I'm drawing from the packet and now I have an addendum. And I'm a pretty organized guy.
We, we could, you are. Uh, we could. It'd be a little bit more complicated and we'd have to, um, we'd have to think about that, how to do it effectively.
Okay, I'll help you with thinking on that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Let's, let's move on to, uh...
Thank you for that.
Onto the prospective bidders and so forth.
So, uh, we, um, we had four bidders come in, uh, and, uh, we had a variety of pricing. Uh, two of them were, were quite close. One was, um, uh, very low and the other one was a, a bit higher than the others. Uh, and so, I'll just, uh, start off and summarize and say that, uh, John Cushing came in with, um, the lowest per unit price for, for gravel, uh, for both the surface and base gravel. Uh, we bid this, uh, per ton, uh, so that in the opportu, in the, in the event that we had varying, um, uh, recommendations come in or our own numbers, uh, proved to be, um, uh, larger or, or lower, that we might be able to, um, accommodate, uh, that by, um, scaling the project appropriately and not being locked into a lump sum payment of, well, it's gonna be $30,000 and, uh, one guy's gonna come in and, and do a 2% grade, one's gonna do a 4% grade.
Right.
Uh, you know, things like that. So, uh, it was intended to be a, uh, per unit, um, type of bid with a summation at the end of it. Um, and so, uh, we had, uh, Cushing come in with, um, uh, his numbers, uh, were, were, uh, some of the lighter numbers as far as tonnage, but he also had a very, uh, very good price for the, uh, for the gravel. Um, I think the, one of the reasons is that he, he, he had built this the first time. Uh, he built the original parking lot. Uh, he also is local. Everybody else is coming from out of town, uh, and he, uh, rents, uh, or leases a gravel pit. So, his materials costs are, uh, likely much lower.
Distance for hauling is close.
All of that. So, uh, I'm not surprised by the lower numbers, um, but I, I was a little bit curious about the, the lower volumes. Uh, we had done some initial, uh, review, uh, with our maintenance staff. I had them cut, to go out and take a transit and get the grades rough, uh, so we could figure out the volume that we were looking at. And, um, uh, it turned out that, uh, conservatively, I think that, that, uh, we're actually the lowest bidder when it comes to the tonnage. Uh, we, we expected to be using less material than anybody had, had presented. Um, that said, um, I, I think that, uh, there is some, um, if we can have more material and still come in under budget, that's fine because what we were looking at was a, um, a, a pretty steep grade relative. I mean, uh, 3% isn't a lot, but, um, over 100 feet, that's a three-foot drop. So, uh, in this parking lot has dimensions that are 80 by 130 roughly. So, we would see, you know, four-foot plus drop in one corner. Um, anyway, I'm getting into the, the weeds on that. Um, we've, um, essentially had four, four bids. Um, I was pleased to see that they were similar in many ways, uh, and I did highlight the low bid in each classification, but overall, uh, John Cushing came in, uh, under, um, uh, everybody else by, by a, a fair amount. Um, and, uh, and he's a well-known contractor to the Town of Reedfield.
Yeah, well, I'm very, um, prepared to accept his bid.
Excuse me.
Very, yeah.
And actually, his, he's not far off on his base gravel. He's actually more than one of the contractors. Well, no, because they were in yards, not tons.
Yeah, and that, that was the point. Uh, I did look though, um, wh- if you look at, uh, comparing him to LP, I think it was either LP Poirier or Wellman, um, it was actually, I think it was, uh, Wellman, um, 734 and 150. That's, uh, 884, uh, basically, and John actually came in with more materials than Wellman.
Just split differently.
It's just split differently. We had, we had recommended or said a minimum of four inches. John came in and I actually believe that, um, uh, LP Poirier did as well, um, uh, where was it? Uh, with, uh, surface gravel that looked like, no, it wasn't. It was Ford. Uh, their surface gravel volumes looked to be closer to six inches. So, we did leave it open for them to recommend what they thought would be most appropriate. John went a little bit heavier on the surface gravel, a little bit lighter on the base. Uh, so, I, I think that it's, it's workable. Uh, one caveat is if we do accept, uh, any of these bids, um, the prices for the rocks, uh, the stones that go along the perimeter, um, are pretty high. We have some material that we can probably access or that we can access, um, that I'd like to not go with that option. So, if we accept any bids, I'd like to exclude the price for the, um, stonework.
The perimeter.
The perimeter stone because it's just, it's something that our staff can do. We have a backhoe. We've got a truck. We've got rocks, uh, and we have ones that are about the right size. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm not joking. Anna said, we've got a bunch of those in the woods out behind the salt sand. And I said, you're absolutely right.
We've got a couple of people who know how to do that stuff.
We, we do. So, I, I'd like to, um, to do that and, um, that would put, um, if we did go with the low bid, put us in around $16,000, uh, which is, uh, a little bit over that, which is what we have for our budget.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue the rocks, but I mean, you, you could spend a lot of time hauling and, and prepping and with smaller equipment, uh, moving that stuff. So...
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to see the motion include the option of, of doing that and, uh, letting you as clerk of work, so to speak, uh, make that decision down the road.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's how I would rather do it.
Is it? I mean, just because?
You mean, if you just figure the number hours and so forth, it, it, you may need that work, you, that work time assigned elsewhere.
Yeah.
But you also may, you may be able to do it over a much longer period of time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it cuts both ways. I just would rather give you the flexibility on it and approve, uh, this at, uh, up to, uh, the...
Up to again.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
I'll make a motion, if I don't choke.
Yes, please.
Um, to approve the bid from John Cushing Construction for the Fairgrounds Parking Lot Expansion as presented, up to $18,302.84.
And I'll second that. Is there any discussion? I think we had it. All in favor? Thank you. Thank Mr. Cushing and the other bidders as well.
Yeah, it was, uh, I was pleasantly surprised to see that much of a turnout for a small gravel parking lot, so...
Yep. Uh, so, moving on, uh, we would add to the agenda tonight, um, the signing of the warrant?
Uh, well, we, and we also have, uh, uh, the cemetery committee, uh, or cemetery, um, tree work, RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Was in the addendum.
I'm sorry?
Uh-oh.
That's okay. Um, and so, uh, this one was fairly complicated. I'll, I'll summarize for Ben. I'll ask him to come up to the microphone if he could because I'm probably gonna turn it over to him fairly quickly, but, um, uh, Ben, uh, I worked with Ben and, uh, put together an RFP for the tree work, uh, one of Ben's first, uh, you know, administrative type projects.
Thank you, Ben.
In the cemetery. Uh, he did a fantastic job, um, and, uh, came out with, uh, we had a good set of bidders, uh, and we had a lot of options. So, we basically have a, a 20 by, 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 let's see, 20 by 10 matrix of, of options. So, uh, it was complicated. Uh, everybody bid a little bit differently, uh, and Ben, uh, spent a lot of time thinking about this project, uh, and deliberating with the cemetery committee to come up with a recommendation. Uh, so, I just wanted to recognize his work and thank Ben for doing that, um, uh, because it, it wasn't easy. Uh, and so, here we are. I think we've got, uh, some good information and I'll let Ben explain kind of where we are and where, uh, they'd like to go.
Uh, yeah, and going into, uh, the pre-bid meeting and then actually going into the cemeteries, I made sure to pass forward the, uh, focus on preserving the cemeteries and, uh, making sure to address like the most possible dangers as well as, if possible, preserving the trees rather than taking them down to sort of keep with the, you know, aesthetics of the cemeteries as well as, you know, a focus on, you know, preserving their beauty. Um, so, going into the bids themselves, at the, uh, surface, it would seem that, uh, brownies would come in at the cheapest. However, all of the bidders had proposed the removal of the number 10 tree, which I don't think you have a, a map in front of you, but when we had done the meeting, all of the arborists had suggested taking down that tree in particular due to its age as well as the look of some of the branches and whatnot.
Which, which tree was that?
Uh, tree number 10.
Okay. And what is tree number 10?
Uh, it was, I'm not sure of the exact type of tree, however, it was in the old section of the cemetery with, um, a few large branches hanging over a number of the, uh, cemetery headstones.
In which cemetery?
Kenshill Cemetery.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but, uh, I can also start with the, um, cemetery's recommendation, which you have in front of you. But, uh, so, the three bidders met all the requirements of the RFP. Each met the needs of removal of hazardous limbs. Each made recommendations for future work. There was an extensive discussion over the 1,300 differential of one bidder with the other two, which was without, uh, taking into consideration the removal of tree number 10, which you can see colored, uh, are orange and those were all recommended courses of action, um, which in the case, since all of them recommended that removal, as I said, it's something that we wanna go forward with in order... something that we wanna go forward with in order to ensure that in the future, no stones in the direct vicinity of that tree are damaged, which would then lead to man-hours, purchasing of equipment and such, that would lead to greater costs. One bidder clearly defined the cabling of trees, which would preserve the aesthetic and historical aspects of the cemetery and its trees. While Stevenson Solutions was the highest bidder, the cemetery committee recommends this be awarded to contract because of the clarity in the description of the tree removal and maintenance, and the detail to which trees would be pruned, cabled, and/or removed. Stevenson also proposed significantly more restorative and tree conservation work than the other two responders. And I also wanna make note that with the prices of the trees, I had made sure to state that if they did happen to go over, we wouldn't need to have all of the trees addressed, we would pick which trees to address depending on the risk to the cemetery's stones underneath. So, it's not like we would need to choose all of the options proposed, however, pick which ones were most pressing. So, in getting down the prices of the two bidders that we had, you know, had the most debate between, because Goucher, although with the price of being willing to round down to 5,000, met our mark, without, he said that he wouldn't address only in like the future removal of 14, 15, and 16, we thought it would be best to go with either Stevenson's or Brownies when in the debating phase, because they would actually address these trees, remove hazardous branches, and therefore, you know, prevent the risk of stones being damaged. So, in, you know, taking into account the recommendations of these two arborist proposals, removing some of the trees that we did not believe would have to be addressed this year and could be addressed down the road, would be tree number 20, which is in the back right-hand corner, it was a younger tree leaning over that I do not believe will be, you know, a risk that needs to be addressed this current bid cycle. So, removing that in both bids, as well as, backtracking a little bit, the difficulty in trying to go about that way is because Brownies had grouped many of the trees together, so we couldn't look back and specifically pick which trees could be, could help in reducing the price. We could do that more so with this Stevenson solution, which ultimately, with the added addition to cabling and sort of the preservation of the trees, I ultimately, you know, would go along with the Stevenson solutions, but I wanna reiterate, it was a very complicated decision. I definitely have thought about it quite a bit, and it was a hard decision to make, but I feel going along with the cemetery's recommendation, cemetery committee's recommendation, as well as discussion with Eric, that does seem like the, the best option.
Thank you, Ben, that's pretty thorough.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Well, actually, first, I guess we need to make a motion since we have other business to extend the meeting for 17 more minutes.
I'll second that, all in favor? I don't think we'll have that much business, but good motion.
Okay, Ben, just a quick question, on the two Stevenson's and Brownies where they're in blue, does that mean that it's grouped together?
Yes.
Okay, so it's 1,200 in Brownies, for instance, to do trees one through nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm with you now. And so, if you take Stevenson's, we'll just talk about that one, would this include removing tree 10? So, you would wanna go ahead and, is it plus, is the difference $200?
The difference is $200.
Okay, and so, it looks like you want to remove tree 10?
Yes.
Okay. And would tree 13 also be to remove it?
No.
Okay. And they were the only two that had the options, oh, I guess tree eight as well, but I'm very happy going with what the cemetery committee and the sexton and the town off, town manager have talked about. I'm not a tree expert, I think there's been a lot of due diligence done, and I'm happy with supporting their suggestion.
Well, yeah, and, and the mission of the cemetery, when you think about it, is preservation of the stones and so on and so forth, so trying to preserve some of the arbor canopy and so forth, I think fits right with that mission.
Yep, absolutely.
And I have no doubts that all the arborists would have done that, so I'm definitely looking forward to, in, with the next fiscal year, putting out another RFP for another cemetery, possibly in this case, K Cemetery on Route 17, so I'm very much looking forward to working with these arborists again and getting another idea of the different trees to be taken down in that cemetery, so...
Good, shall we make a motion?
Please do.
You wanna do it?
No, you do it, I just...
I'd like to make a motion to pru... Good heavens. To approve the bid from Stevenson Solutions for the Kent Hill Cemetery tree work as presented.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Stevenson Solutions' bid to be put into effect. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Ben, thank you for all the work.
Thank you very much.
And I, I apologize, I real, I should've realized you were sitting there.
No problem, hey, it's good to get an idea.
This addendum in front of me, and I actually would've tried to move the agenda around a little bit.
Hey, I'm, I'm glad to get the experience, you know? Hey, the small-town work, you gotta love it. This is how the country runs.
Ben hadn't been here before, too, so...
Yes.
So, this was good.
This was good, yeah.
Great job, man.
Well, I appreciate your time and nice to meet you all as well, so...
Thank you, Ben. You look a little different than during the workday.
Yes, yes, try to clean up a little bit, you know?
Do we still have to do something with the ballot?
Yeah, so, we'll need to move on to the ballot now. We've actually approved all the language on this, but you feel another motion is...
Yeah, just, just, just to be doubly certain, because this, this is the final version that, that's the wrong folder.
It will be printed.
The final version that will be printed, and the final version following edits by the attorneys and grammatical corrections and all that. So, this is the be-all, end-all, and that's also included in the addendum.
Is this the draft we received by email?
This is, I, I don't know.
There, there was a draft that went around about a week ago.
Included the, oh, that one, yes.
That was the sample.
Yep, that, that's, this is the same.
Yeah.
I think there might be a few small grammatical edits, but this is what will be nailed to the post office door to, to notify the public that we're, that we're serious. So, this is the, what we would consider the attested copy, so once you folks sign this, we will move it forward into...
So, we should, we should have a, take a motion to approve the posting of the warrant as printed and presented tonight.
And then, this is what will be used to make the ballot, that will be machine-read?
Yes, and we've actually done that kind of together, so we can, it's actually a good way to find errors and edits, is to do it in that format. So, we went back and forth, we got the final version back from the, the printer yesterday or today, and the clerk put this together, so we...
Yeah, the one I saw actually looked like the ballot.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, so there, there, this is the same information, it's the different form, and this allows us to do the notices and all of that, and, and have an official attested copy that you all have signed.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve by signing and posting the annual town meeting warrant and the secret ballot printing as presented in the addendum to our packet.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, does the motion need to be re-read?
No.
Hearing no, is there any discussion?
Thank you for all the work on this.
Thank everybody in the process.
Yeah, Deb has really taken on a lot of this, and so she's been very good about keeping this on track.
This is her first election to take it from A to Z, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
It's great, for us, so that's great. So, all in favor? Thank you. We don't have anything else, right?
That's it.
I want to make a motion to adjourn.
I don't see a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?